Good morning. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, July 24th. I'll call the meeting to order and I will ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boujack.
President.
Vice Chair Burrow.
Here.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Halsted.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Morse.
Here.
Oliver King. Patcliff.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks. Stuck.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen members present, three absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, we'll move on to agenda item number three and I'll ask Commissioner McLeod to please lead us in the invocation.
Thank you Chair, hold on just a second. I lost my email. I'm sorry, I had it up and then it just disappeared on me, so give me just a second. It is perfect timing, right? Oh. Did I delete it? There it is, okay. All right, if everyone bowed their heads, that'd be great, thank you. Gracious God, we come together today in a time of both challenge and opportunity. We acknowledge the divisions and complexities of our political landscape. We ask for your wisdom to guide our leaders and for strength and discernment for all citizens. May we be united in our pursuit of justice, peace, and the common good. Help us see the humanity in each other, to listen with open hearts, and to work together for a better future. Grant us the courage to overcome our differences and to build a society where all can thrive. Help us find ways to fill the gaps that the decisions made in higher places impact our local government. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Minority Vice Chair McLeod for the invocation. We're going to move on to agenda item number five, which is the Special Order of Business. I'd like to welcome up Sheriff Michelle LaJoie Young and her team to give the Sheriff's Office annual report on law enforcement and support services. Good morning, guys.
She's going to throw me to the wolves here and let me present this.
Morning, Under Sheriff.
We'll go for that. For those of you that don't know or may be attending, I'm Under Sheriff Brian Muir, and we're going to be presenting our 2024 performance measures. And with that, I'm going to start out a little bit differently and just kind of address the elephant in the room, which is, it's not lost on the Sheriff's Office, we're the most expensive department in the county, and that you expect a lot from us. We do understand that it's a heavy weight to bear for our community's safety, but it's not done alone. I've been able to sit here and listen to the performance measure presentations by some really great leadership of your other department directors and elected officials, and we lean on them quite regularly, whether it's Amy with the last-minute HR crisis, or poor Tim Beck and his team when we're trying to get some obscure, unique software up and running at the Sheriff's Office. It is really a cooperative effort with collaboration from all the department directors and elected officials to make the Sheriff's Department operate, and we thank each and every one of them for that. In addition to that, the leadership team that we have at the Sheriff's Office, including the senior leaders that are in the back row with me today, really are the bread and butter of what keeps our operations running. Their professionalism, their leadership, their mentoring of our younger staff, really directs those nearly eight hundred full-time, part-time, and volunteer employees that are led by the Sheriff's Office. So, I'm just going to take a brief minute because some of them are new to this and introduce them. So, we have Captain Ben Camiga, who oversees our patrol operations; Captain Justin DiBaudi, who oversees our investigative division; we have Captain Jason Richards, who is unfortunately going to be leaving us to retirement October 1st, who oversees our support service operations; and his new partner, Captain John Degru, who will oversee our support operations once Jason retires; Captain Jeff Pavlovic, who oversees our corrections division; Captain Brad Lyons, who some of you may know, who oversees our corrections operations; Chief Lindsay Cole, who oversees our corrections operations; and then Chief Jason Kelly, who oversees our enforcement operations. I hope some of you also know the sheriff over here as well, too. We'll talk to Captain Joel Rune, who is going to be the captain of our newest division that we'll talk about in our performance measures here today, who oversees our crime intelligence and technology division. So. Again, truly honored to lead a team that's so great, any one of them could be sitting in my spot doing just as good of a job, but it is truly a cooperative effort of all county elected department directors and then our leadership team. So, getting right into our performance measures here, some of this information, for those sitting on the board who have been here year over year, you've seen before, so I'll kind of breeze through some of that, but please feel free to ask questions at the end. But we're going to cover our values, our vision, our mission briefly, some of the priorities of the Sheriff's Office, some of our key goals and metrics that we'll report on year over year, and then just a few of our significant accomplishments. If you take a look at our priorities, which we've identified as public safety, community engagement, effective and efficient services, and resource allocation, infrastructure, sustainability, you'll see they almost directly correlate to the county's overall missions and objectives as well, too. That's done intentionally, because we're all moving in the same direction here in Kent County, and we all have the same mission, to make this community great. So, I really do believe that collective makes Kent County a great place to live, work, or visit. Our values, vision, and mission, I'll only quick touch on a few highlights here, but I was fortunate enough to spend two and a half months down at the FBI National Academy, working with law enforcement executives, chiefs from around the world. And I'll say, we all have a different idea of what leadership is and what the vision of a law enforcement agencies are. Some see them as warriors, some see them as servants, some see them as guardians, and I'm very thankful to work for an agency such as ours, that sees our agencies as the guardians of the community to keep them safe. Everything we do is seen through the eyes of who we serve, whether or not it's providing the service, the empathetic ear that they may need, or providing them an avenue of treatment that may be something outside of arrest or incarceration. So, take a brief moment to take a look at that, but I really do believe our leadership led by the sheriff here, providing us those values, vision, and missions, really guides our team to work to a common goal. Talk briefly about the growth of Kent County, which is nothing unusual to you and something that we talk about on a regular basis, but we're growing and we're growing quick. And I talk about the growth because we're seeing a real growth on the south end of our county, with several of our townships rivaling the size of cities now. So, we're providing services, not only to our community based on some staffing models that have existed for decades, but we're providing it for a growing part of our population, as well as the increased need that they have for our services. And those services are provided, to forty percent of the residents of Kent County rely on the Sheriff's Office for their law enforcement services. So, that's quite a bit of the population that we've seen. However, all of the population of Kent County relies on some of our countywide services that you're going to see identified here. Our animal control, which is one of the newest initiatives that we've taken over the last several years, which has been highly successful, we take nearly six thousand complaints in every one of your districts and cities that you represent. Our emergency management, which helps coordinate countywide initiatives for emergency response, both man-made and natural disasters. Our patrol support, which offers support to every one of the law enforcement agencies throughout Kent County, whether it's the city of Grand Rapids, Wyoming, Kentwood, Walker, we assist every one of those agencies through mutual aid anytime they request it. Our investigative division helps out in those major crime investigations on a routine basis. We have the technology, the training, the scope, and the ability to do what some of the smaller agencies may not be able to do, and then have the technology to support their investigations. So, we may not even take over the entire investigation, but our resources are available to the county for any law enforcement agency that may need them to support their investigations. And as you see, our drone operations, our K-9 unit, our mounted unit, some of the unique services that we provide to all, including our victim advocates program, which is the team that goes out when you have a situation where you may have a family grieving over a tragic loss, or something that was unexpected in their life. It's a fantastic program, it's run by volunteers, and it truly makes a difference to the community, and we'll go into even our satisfaction survey of those services that we provide that go above and beyond the traditional law enforcement functions of the Sheriff's Office. And now, I didn't mean to go through fourteen slides, so let's just get back into where that went.
A little preview.
A little preview, we've got to be careful what we got here. All right, so maybe we'll use the clicker here. So, our road patrol division, I'll let you take a quick look at that, but that is the most prevalent part of any law enforcement agency. It's your uniformed officers working in the patrol cars that are answering your routine day-to-day calls for service, trying to help the community attach what type of service they may need. We're the gateway to a lot of services. People may call us, but not necessarily need a law enforcement service, but need help with a mental health disorder, or substance use disorder, they may need help with transportation, they may need to get ahold of some other social service. So, our staff in the road patrol is really the gatekeeper for a lot of those services that you see throughout the county. And we have a lot of them. We have a hundred and fifty-four people assigned to our uniform patrol division. Now, that may seem substantial, but that's spread out over six different shifts, covering both days, nights, and our power shift, where we see our highest call volume. So, at any given point, you may have anywhere from twenty to twenty-five patrol staff covering all nearly eight hundred square miles of Kent County, which is quite a bit, and we'll talk a little bit about our response time and some of the lagging indicators that we see with adding some of this new staff to our patrol operations as well, too. And our patrol operations handled over seventy-two thousand nine hundred calls for service, nearly two hundred calls per day. And again, if you're only having twenty-some people out there, that's a few calls per person, and that may seem insignificant, but some of those calls may take days, weeks, months to investigate. So, every call for service isn't like delivering the mail, where you go from a mailbox, drop it in, and move on to the next call. Some of these calls can tie up resources for a significant period of time. And although we have a hundred and fifty-four officers working through our patrol operations right now, we've talked to this board before about our staffing study and adding additional personnel, have been fortunate enough to hire ahead, to adjust for resignations and retirements. Last year, we hired thirty-one new staff into our patrol operations, but we lost twenty. So, even though we take one step forward, we always take a half step back. So, it's very difficult to get people right now into the law enforcement field, even more difficult to get them and get them to stay here in the law enforcement field. So, it's a constant battle that we work through every day. But out of those seventy-two thousand complaints, we'll touch on one of our performance measures here, which is, we track the incidents that we use force for, any one of our operations on the law enforcement division. So, this doesn't just cover our road patrol operations, it'll be our support services, our investigative division, our crime intelligence division. Point three-one percent of those seventy-three-plus-thousand calls for service, any amount of force is used. And out of those two-hundred-and-thirty uses of force, only twenty of those uses of force resulted in any type of minor injury to either an officer or a citizen that we serve. And out of that, even fewer, only two incidents required any type of additional follow-up care or hospitalization review before release. So, the amount of force for the number of calls for service our agency is using is remarkably low compared to any other law enforcement agency here in West Michigan and across the And it's only getting better. That's a point zero-eight decrease from last year, and a lot of that is, again, based on the training that our officers are being provided, and we'll touch on that a little bit later here as well, too. So, those bread and butter calls that our road patrol officers respond to on a daily basis, they're categorized for us as priority one and priority two calls for service. Those are some of your very urgent, life-threatening matters. Someone's breaking into your house, you're inside. Someone's breaking into your house, but you're not there and it's on your Ring Cam. Someone's assaulting you, somebody's trying to rob business, or a person, a carjacking. Those are your priority one and two calls for service. And as you can see, you know, the numbers are somewhat static year over year for those types of calls for service, but we're getting a quicker response time to those calls for service, which is, again, one of the metrics that we've been tracking, that's established by the International Chiefs of Police Association, and that was further solidified by our staffing study for national trends for law enforcement agencies across the country. Our response times are getting better. Our contracted services are down maybe only nine seconds, because we've already had a substantial footprint into those communities. But our non-contracted townships, some of those outlined townships on the northeast and south ends of our county, are nearly a minute faster. And although, you know, I'll address that sixteen minutes is a very long time to be waiting for any type of emergency response, we do believe, again, that those services are getting better and that the positions that you've authorized for us to hire will continue to have an impact on us. If you don't recall, the additional fourteen positions that were granted to the Sheriff's Office were only approved as of May of this year, so we're hoping that by the time they're hired, trained, that we're going to see an impact in 2025 and moving forward as well, too, for that metric. Response times, I know all of you represent different communities, if you take a look at the map that's presented here to you, you'll see where some of our lagging response times really are. They're the far east, south, and north ends of our county. Those contracted townships may have two, three, four cars that are available on a regular basis, but you get to the fringe of our county and it takes longer, because it takes longer to get two cars to one place when they're traversing across many of those busy highways and roadways that we see every day here in Kent County. So, it's a metric that we're continuing to work with. Some of our senior leadership team there work with our lieutenants that routinely meet with township supervisors, city officials, trying to make sure they're aware of the response times for the community and advocating for additional contracted services on a regular Here we go again, I'm going to have to go ahead and not use this clicker, because I'm skipping ahead. Going to go back now and transition just briefly into our investigative division. And from what you see in your packet here, you can kind of get an idea of what our investigative division does. It's the CSI, the crime TV shows that you see, they investigate all the incidents that occur, they process the evidence, they evaluate the evidence, they work with our prosecutors for prosecution on significant cases. And because we like to keep Justin and his team busy, we also throw in the courts and court security and transfers in there as well, too. But the core function of our investigative division is working those cases and complaints that originate many times from our road patrol operations to and through prosecution. Our investigative division, just for a short overview, is broken into several different units. Our major case, responsible for those really high-profile critical incidents, which may be a homicide, the series of robberies, general case, our pattern crimes team, human trafficking, which is a new initiative for us over the last couple of years, our narcotics enforcement team, front of the court, our crime scene, property management, court security, and transfer. And I'll say, every one of those units makes a substantial impact in what they do for our community. But some of the most forward-facing units, I would say, are our pattern crimes team, our narcotics unit, and our major case team. Our metro pattern crimes team is a cooperative with local law enforcement agencies across West Michigan, and we can say substantial impact has been made, that we've noticed a decrease in every one of our crime categories over the last several years since this team was formed, which we believe is in correlation not only with the efforts from those teams, but from some of the technology that you've been allowing us to purchase and use here in Kent County. So, our investigations, our patrol operations, the technologies that we're using are having an impact. Crime is down here in Kent County, as well as in our jurisdiction. Clearance rates, they're also reflect that crime is down. We solve cases. We solve cases at a higher rate than any other agency here in West Michigan, any other agency across the state, and then to the national trends. If you take a look at our success rates and our clearance, again, higher than any other agency around here. We do an outstanding job investigating every single complaint that comes into the Sheriff's Office, whether or not it's something that we consider to be a nuisance complaint between neighbors, retail fraud that is, you know, prevalent across every one of the businesses that we represent, or those significant violent crimes that we want to make sure don't occur in our community. We investigate them all, we investigate them all thoroughly, and we are going to talk a little bit about some initiatives that we're working through to combine the intelligence across the West Michigan community to do that even better moving forward here in the So, what are we seeing in the investigative world right now? We are, you know, attacking those pattern crimes, because if we can end crimes sooner, those repeat offenses, we hope, no longer affect our community, driving our crime stats down, hopefully increasing that clearance rate for us as well, too. So, we've done that in a couple of different ways, along with some of our strategic partnerships. The real-time information shared amongst law enforcement agencies here in Kent County has really started to speed up. We've now worked together to share with our crime analysts, all records, database systems with our agencies in a cooperative effort. And we'll talk a little bit more about how that's being done here in a minute. And again, that pattern crime, that repeat offender, we've worked hand-in-hand, whether or not it's juvenile crime with our circuit court administrator, the juvenile courts on the intake processing forms, or our adult court system, to make sure that pattern crime offenders are taken off the streets so that they can no longer reoffend for us. That coordinated effort, again, we believe, since this occurred in the last two years, where we're starting to see the downtrend of crime here in West Michigan, has had an impact. So, we're very proud of those initiatives that we've worked through, not only with our local law enforcement partners, but the courts, the juvenile system, and all those nonprofits that are assisting for alternative treatment programs. But we're using technology more and more. You know, I've mentioned it last year, a little bit about my smart watch, my smart ring, and all the different features that are out there. Technology is something that we can't get away from. And what we're seeing is a lot of crime that used to be committed, you know, hand-to-hand, person-to-person, is moving on to that online cyber realm. So, we're starting to move forward as to what our crime-fighting future may look like here in Kent County. We can no longer ignore that that is a substantial trend that we'll show you here on a slide in a minute, that needs to be addressed. So, we've integrated a lot of different pieces of technology. And you can see some of the items that we're using here, and we'll talk a little bit more in the future. But crime fighting's not the only thing that we do. Our education, we are out there almost every day presenting to one community group or another to make sure that they're well aware of the current trends that are affecting this community, and hopefully preventing them falling victim of some of those online crimes. I don't know how many of you may have paid a toll for your kid's car, or may have gotten the text message, or get the message that someone's hurt or injured and need to transfer some funds, but it's something that typically affects our community and very little can be done about it. And we want to make sure that, as a local law enforcement agency, we're doing the best we can to present that. Current trends right now, drugs, I mean, drugs is something that never seems to go away, but it's not just the enforcement, there's a more coordinated effort, both with the treatment, the prevention, the programming that we're offering in our facility, and hopefully in having people leaving our facility better positioned to be successful in their futures. But drugs are still an issue in our community. The retail frauds, again, they're prevalent, but I'll say, in West Michigan, for Kent County in particular, we have seen a decrease in retail frauds, which is against the trends of what we're seeing across the rest of the state and the nation. And that is because of, again, the coordinated effort that our agency is using. We've established a retail crimes team, we're meeting with loss prevention managers from across the retail and commercial sectors, trying to coordinate a better response to prevent those repeat offenders and to make arrests when they're necessary. And then I briefly talked about the cybercrime. Cybercrime trends, whether or not it's the ransomware attacks, the data breaches, the confidential thefts, where they threaten you with your own personal information to release funds to them, the phishing, and now most recently, I'm sure you're all aware of this, phishing, with those messages coming to you with a link that you want to at least verify to see if there may be some truth, where now they've captured some of your personal information and potentially allowing them to transfer funds. And it's an issue because what we're seeing, reported from the FBI's IC-3, which is where most of our community right now is reporting cybercrime, since local law enforcement may not have the jurisdiction, has significantly spiked, from just five million dollars in 2020 to over thirty million dollars here in 2024, with really no end in sight. So, we need to work collaboratively with our federal and local partners to make sure that we're addressing this trend, because there is a significant amount of money leaving our community through cybercrime right here in Kent County. Talk briefly about our support services division. It's a little bit of the catch-all for our Sheriff's Office. It has a lot of different roles and functions, but I think the one that they're most proud of is our community engagement efforts. It houses our community policing team, as well as our school resource officer team. Our school resource officers, if you're not aware, we have twenty-one representing thirteen districts across Kent County that are working day in day with our most vulnerable populations. Some of our schools are the most populated areas of the county throughout the day, and having that resource there, not only for security, but for mentoring, is truly insurmountable. It's helped us significantly in solving crimes, preventing crimes, and making sure that the school-related incidents are handled appropriately before they become out of hand and result in any tragedies that may occur at those schools. In addition to that, our support services oversees our records unit, our dispatch operations, as well as our training. And we'll talk a little bit about the staff training that we have here in a second as well, too. But it comes with a lot of hurdles, you know, with all that added technology, we've seen some increase in the FOIA requests and the amount of processing that needs to be done, and we're trying to work through some of those hurdles as well, too. But from those community engagement efforts, again, we have a satisfaction rating on those surveys, that over ninety-nine percent of the people that attend any one of our presentations and/or community events is appreciative of what we're doing. Those connections that we're establishing with hundreds of thousands of people being contacted every year through those presentations, we truly believe has made an impact on the reputation of the Sheriff's Office, and allowed us to add that accountability and trust that we really rely on when something critical does happen to the Sheriff's Office, and they want to know that we're doing the best we can in their interest. I'll let you take a look at some of the things that are on there. I don't think Dee's in here, but we did go to his e-gaming thing as well, too, so it's not on there, but we're trying to represent some of his projects as well, too. Again, our school resource officers, so critical, they were the ones that really were the brain trust behind trying to find a way to make sure that there is connected communication into our school radio project that was funded through our dollars, and we'll talk a little bit about how it's expanding there. Because even though we have school resource officers in thirteen districts, they're not in every building. We have nearly four hundred K-through-twelve buildings here in Kent County, with twenty-one officers representing those buildings in our primary jurisdiction. There's just nowhere, no way to be everywhere at one point. And we believe that our school radio project was a great addition to school security and Training-wise, all of our staff, all of our uniformed staff is a hundred percent trained on all mandatory training requirements. And I know I've stood before you for presentations and talked about some of the additional training that may not be required, that response to mental health disorders, substance use disorders, dealing with people with autism or special needs. We do above and beyond all the standard mandatory training required by the state at our law enforcement agency. We really pride ourselves on being able to respond to any incident, no matter how difficult or critical, with the appropriate amount of training, resources, equipment, and force. Talk briefly about our dispatch center as well. If you're not aware, we dispatch for twenty-eight fire agencies, ten law enforcement agencies. We're basically the only other dispatch center outside of the city of Grand Rapids, which primarily dispatches just their own police and fire. So, any one of the other communities that you're representing, typically the resources will be dedicated to the Sheriff's Office, and we're providing all that communication services. We also work with our road commission and other local county entities to make sure that their communication systems are up and running, and we assist with tracking their personnel when they're also out there responding to those critical incidents. And they're busy. Our dispatch center has taken almost three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand calls in 2024. So, every day, we're getting quite a few calls for service, and as you can see from that metrics, a lot of those are your 911 calls, as well as the non-emergency calls. So, a non-emergency call may be anything more than, I saw someone walking into my neighborhood and I don't know what they're there, can you come check it out, to there's an accident on the highway. And our performance measure is to answer all of those 911 calls, ninety-five percent of them within fifteen seconds. We exceeded that, we're at ninety-seven-point-eight-three. And as we talked about last year, some of the times that we see that number dip from ninety-nine, from a hundred percent, is storm surging, there's certain areas that you may see that there's one accident, you get fifteen calls about it. Well, it's hard to answer every single call within fifteen seconds, if you're getting multiple calls, about the same thing at the same time. But our staffing and the dispatch center can typically handle anything that comes through, again, a ninety-seven percent success rate for fifteen seconds, a ninety-nine-point-nine-nine within forty seconds, because I think any one of you that's called 911 or asked for emergency assistance wants that call to be answered, you need that call for help as soon as possible, knowing that resources are coming your way, whether it's law enforcement, medical, or a combination of both. Our school safety project, I know I just briefly touched on that, about the school radio initiative that was started here in Kent County, I'll say that we've taken that now one step further. We are the only law enforcement agency that we know across the entire nation that is connected in our school radio project with an emergency notification system for all schools across Kent County, and now I'll transition into providing a immediate video link into those schools when a 911 call is issued at those schools. That is so critically important, to provide immediate resources where they're needed. We do believe it would save lives if ever needed, as well as provide immediate response for all the state, local, and federal partners that may respond to a critical incident like this. So, we'll talk a little bit more about what that real-time crime initiative looks like and how it's moving forward. If you haven't had the opportunity to stop over at the Sheriff's Office and see, this is a picture of our real-time information center that we are using at the Sheriff's Office, and the software that is supported on this picture here is FUSIS. It's an Axon product now, and what it is, is basically a single pane of glass, and I'm stealing this from Captain Rune, that allows to bring all these diverse systems that are operated independently into one one system where we can pull them all up together. So whether or not it's our body cameras, our in-car camera systems, our FLOCK LPR systems, camera security systems from the schools, we can use this one piece of software to bring real-time intelligence into our operations center and then provide directed response for that. It was a school-related initiative, but now that we have the software up and running, we do see some crossover where this may be very beneficial for some of the entertainment districts here in the city of Grand Rapids, as well as other high-population areas like the ballpark, where we see a lot of our community members go. So you'll be hearing a lot from us on this real-time information center moving forward as we start to scale that out to meet the community's needs. In software and technology, it's not just the FUSIS real-time center plane of glass. This is an example of a search pattern that we had used, some of the most recent technology, Intrepid, for the missing 15-year-old up in the Rockford area. That was a substantial search done over days with multiple law enforcement agencies, search and rescue, canines, mounted units, some of our parks personnel. And to coordinate something like that on paper is almost nonexistent anymore. And every one of our staff is carrying either a radio and/or a cell phone that allows us to get GPS data and information, and we're able to very succinctly plot out search patterns, grids, make sure that we're getting every nook and cranny searched versus a traditional, "Hey, I walked through the woods and I didn't see anything." The technology that we're using and the way that we're going to be able to integrate it into emergency response, both natural and man-made disasters or critical incidents, is really second to none with our agency. And just like I mentioned in those previous slides, this is the software and the technology that we provide all of their agencies as a countywide service and help coordinate. So not only is it something that we use on a day-to-day basis, it's provided to everyone throughout the county, it's a resource for them to use as well. Cover a couple of our quick, significant accomplishments. If you hadn't heard, our dispatch authority has really been working towards that cybersecurity and preventing any type of breach to our systems here at Kent County. So there's been some substantial increases into the overall cybersecurity of our Grand Rapids Dispatch Center, as well as the Sheriff's Dispatch Center, which has been a multi-year initiative that is coming to fruition. The embedded Network 180 condition into our dispatch center, again, another resource that we're providing to our law enforcement personnel across Kent County as an alternative to incarceration or arrest. So we find this program to be very beneficial. It's still in the early stages. We're trying to figure out the most appropriate staffing model for that and how we can scale that, not only for the sheriff's office, but some of the other jurisdictions. But again, a very successful program that we hope to see much more from in the future. Accreditation, I know we had a presentation in here earlier this year, receiving our accreditation, but again, a multifaceted accomplishment involving all units and divisions of the sheriff's office to ensure that we're meeting the standards, not only of local law enforcement, but state law enforcement across the entire state of Michigan. We were one of the first sheriff's offices to accomplish that task and the largest agency to do it to date when we accomplished it. So really, quite an accomplishment for our staff to come together to make sure that we're meeting the needs and have an outside independent view as to how the sheriff's department operates. And then that real-time intelligence and information center, again, bringing that single pane of glass in to connect all these disparate systems into one view is really going to have an impact that we believe not only in 2024, but for the future going ahead. So very proud of those accomplishments, very proud of our team, and very thankful for the cooperation that we get from everyone here at the county and its administration. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Under Sheriff, I'll start off by just saying, excellent presentation. You're doing a great job as the under sheriff. Sheriff does a great job leading the team. To have all of our leadership in the back here, we really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and I'll just say what a source of pride for our community that that department is. So thank you so much. All right, questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Pondstall.
Thank you, Chair Green. Under Sheriff, thanks for being here today. There's a lot to cover. You guys do a lot of things, and I think a lot of things people don't realize that we do. So I just want to touch on, too, that people know about, but I just want to get a little more information. The Marine Patrol Division, when people hear that, the drowning is the first thing that comes up. I know in these times of uncertainty, smaller counties sometimes don't have the systems that we do. How much do we use ours? What are some unique things that we do besides just drownings? And how many calls do we get for assistance from other counties?
So to summarize our Marine Patrol, it is partially funded by a state grant, and I know this year, the grant was rolled back in dollars, and we continue to bring that initiative forward for general fund dollars to support it, because we do truly believe that our Marine Patrol is a critical part of our operations. Not only are they responding to or patrolling our lakes, it's the education pieces that they do year-round to prevent those drownings, to prevent those boating accidents from recurring on our lakes here in Kent County. But it is probably one of the best-run, operated divisions that we have. It's mostly part-time staff, that are retired officers and/or teachers that come in and work for our Marine Patrol. And I won't say that we rival Lake Ottawa County or the Muskegans, where they have, you know, Lake Michigan, and they have substantially more in their boats and they're training in their day-to-day operations, but by no means do I think that we're understaffed in our Marine Patrol and that we do understand it's a critical component in operations within the sheriff's office and make sure that it's a daily occurrence, that they're out on every one of our lakes here throughout the summer months.
Okay, and then the other division, the, and this is something that seems we find out more and more every day about what these things can and can't do, our drone division. It's not so much maybe what the future looks like for law enforcement, for us to use it for the good of the community, but my concern is, is what are drones going to be used by the criminal element, and how do we face that task when it comes? Because, you know, I've seen so far, there's nothing that a drone can't do, so.
Correct, and it's very concerning. Counter-drone intelligence is a topic that we speak about on a regular basis at the sheriff's office. Captain Rune is just appointed to be part of the Michigan Drone Association to talk about legislation and/or counter-drone measures. I mean, we've all seen what happened in Russia and Ukraine with drones. Those weren't your traditional drones. Those are fiber optic drones, which are even more of a concern. But yes, every day, at the state, local, and federal level, conversations are occurring on counter-drone intelligence and technology. So we are aware of it, and we're trying to do as best we can to prepare this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the license plate recognition technology and how we're using it. Obviously, it's controversial for a lot of people because, you know, where do you draw the line between surveillance and supporting investigations? And I'd like to know, you know, how you're using it and what your policies are regarding that.
Yeah, so typically, it supports investigations. And if you weren't aware or haven't seen any of the technology and how it's used, it captures a vehicle and a plate. It doesn't capture the occupants of that vehicle, so we don't know who's operating the vehicle. It allows our investigators to potentially establish timelines and locate stolen vehicles as the primary use here in Kent County. Some of those crime patterns that I said that have reduced since 2022, which is when we began to bring FLOCK technology, the LPRs, into Kent County, were the number of pursuits that we had, going from 150 down to 80 in the last year, and then the number of stolen vehicles we had, which spiked over 500 and is now less than 200 per year. That technology is being used to prevent what we had seen as the juvenile population taking cars, initiating with pursuits, and putting the community at risk. That was really the driver behind why we brought that technology here, was to fight what was a pattern crime occurring throughout West Michigan at the time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Good morning, Brian, and thank you for the report. So first of all, I want to acknowledge you and the sheriff and the department for your cooperation and partnership with 180 in the embedment of a social worker, a dispatch, and certainly look forward to seeing how that might change the dynamics of the responses. I understand that co-response isn't maybe the best model when you have to cover the entire county, but we're certainly looking forward to seeing what difference this kind of thing makes. So do you have set time now when you'll report on how that's doing? Is it like one year?
So we're really going to have to work with Network 180 on that, because since May, when we've really started to have staff inside our facility, it has been a little bit of a challenge to get them up to speed with the technologies that we're using and then finding the right handoff. So I think it may take us a little bit longer than a year just to establish the appropriate metrics to report back on, as this program is being evaluated and continuing to be improved.
Well, I think it's an important new step in this process, so if you need us to push from the other side, you let us know.
Absolutely, we appreciate it.
So the second thing is, you mentioned your use of force, and the numbers are really quite remarkable as you describe them. Our society, though, is kind of shifting in what is perceived as acceptable levels of force and so on. How do you measure what is a use of force?
Well, anytime we present a deadly force weapon would be considered a use of force, and anytime that we put hands on a person would be considered use of force. So all those metrics are captured, whether or not it's simply a little bit of a pushing and shoving match that may be going on to put somebody into custody, or we present any one of our deadly force weapons or options. We track all of that through our Axon Professional Standards Module, and then we evaluate. Every one of those use-of-force incidents reviewed by a first-line supervisor and then a member of our command staff, and anything that raises any concerns is then transferred over to our Professional Standards Division and then the appropriate chief of that division to review to make sure that there wasn't something done inappropriately. And if there's something that is based on the training model and/or the information we're providing our staff, that immediate corrections are made, and our staff is handling that appropriately.
So there's some objectivity to then the assessment of, so again, for example, if an officer takes an individual into custody and you're walking them back to the car, you put the hand on the individual, that may not be a use of force, but at some point, if you have to wrestle them to the car, it would become a use of force.
If you are using use of force to push-pull, typically that's reported as a use of force. And really, that transparency, the accountability and the trust is with our body camera system and our in-car camera system. You know, it's sort of policy for our officers, whether uniformed or not, to be wearing your body-worn camera when you're working your shifts or your duties, so that we can capture any of that data. So it's not so objective to say that the officer can report it differently. If a citizen or their family complains, that can also trigger the start of an investigation and will be reviewed appropriately as well, too.
Okay. Well, that just makes those numbers even more amazing to me, that we're able to handle that many engagements with the public with such a minimal necessity for any use of force.
It's truly incredible.
And my last one is, we talked about all of the circumstances in which we provide services to local jurisdictions. Do we quantify that in some way?
Typically, we can, we quantify it, the report numbers polled for that assistance, we will do it, but not every single call. I mean, just like you saw down here, unfortunately, on South Division just the other day, the city of Wyoming, the city of Kentwood, Michigan State Police, the number of response officers that we had, it's very difficult to track all the number of people and personnel that respond, because those calls per service are somewhat fluid. And when we know there's a need for emergency assistance, we're going to send it. Now, it's easier to quantify when the city of Grand Rapids may have a planned protest or a public demonstration, and we're coordinating resources, but it occurs so frequently on a day-to-day basis, it's difficult to track.
So, but it's providing some assistance to our local jurisdictions that they badly need from time to time. And it just seems to me that at some level, it may not be perfect, but at some level, it would be helpful to know, you know, where are we providing those services? What's the depth of those services and the overall spectrum of what we do?
Yep, and that's captured, again, in our CAD system for dispatch through an assist other complaint number. I just want to say, when we track that metric, it occurs so regularly that that may not capture all of the additional assistance that we're providing.
Thank you again.
Commissioner Womack.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Thank you for your service, and I just wanted to publicly just let you know our concern. We are, yeah, happy that no deputies were hurt this week when someone took a preemptive strike out on the deputies, and the patience they used, because usually, in any gun training, we do know that when someone lifts their gun, it's milliseconds, you got a second to decide if your life or their life is going to be gone. So just thankful that our deputies were not hurt. Of the 380,000 calls in 2024, do you have a number on how much, how many times force was used?
Well, those 380,000 calls, again, don't come all to our agencies. So the numbers of incidents that we respond to is where we track the use of force, but because we do dispatch for Wyoming and Kentwood and Walker PD, Granville, all those agencies, that use-of-force metric would be tracked independently by those agencies. So although we're the call intake center, we only can track the stats related to our agency.
Okay, so when you talked about the 72,900 calls, were those to Kent County?
Those are our calls at the sheriff's office, correct.
And there was 230 uses of force?
Correct.
On those 72,900 calls, did a car respond to each one of those?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and was that an annual, or was that over a period of time?
That's annual for 2024. Those are our response numbers.
Okay, thank you for that. And also, when it comes to the license plate reader, does the company you contract, do they have the right to share that information with other law enforcement in ICE?
Contractually, that data and information is ours at the sheriff's office.
Okay, and that's in the contract?
Yep.
Because it's been in the media that law enforcement in this area, not Kent County deputies or Kent County Sheriff's Office, of course, have been contacting like those agencies to get information on license plates. So that's where my question came from.
Yep. So that's a different question, Commissioner, and maybe I can help clarify that. So the vendor themselves that provide the software don't have access to our data and information. That's owned by the Kent County Sheriff's Office. But there is a cooperation with how that data for LPRs is shared with law enforcement in general, and just like any other investigative lead, report, tip, data and information that we have, if a neighboring law enforcement agency believes the information that we've captured and/or have on file is beneficial to their criminal investigation, we will share that data. So our LPR data may be shared with the city of Wyoming, the city of Kentwood, if they ask for that data or information that may be coordinated with their criminal complaint.
Is there anything either in any contracts or any communications with them that talks about how they can use that outside of their investigation or share or sell information at all yet?
Absolutely. Everything that we release is based on a criminal investigation that will help identify a suspect responsible for a crime.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for today's presentation. I believe you've already answered my question, so I'm, this morning, to news, we just saw another black eye to law enforcement, where an officer busted a window of an African-American male and punched him in the face. And, you know, again, it lends itself to continuing distrust. So, but I believe when you were explaining use of force and the actions that you guys take, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair Green. Under Sheriff Brian, excellent presentation. Noted that you did that without any notes, so your familiarity with the information certainly is very, very good. Can you go back to that slide at the very beginning where you showed the total number of calls and the percentage?
For our use of force?
0.31%.
Yeah, it was right at the beginning, I believe. And I just wanted to comment that, right there, the media, unfortunately, focuses on that .031. They fish the 72,900 calls, looking for things that happened, and that 0.31, I think it's unfair to the sheriff's department that incidents are reported in such a way that the 72,900 calls seem insignificant. And I challenge the media to take this information and report it to the citizens and show that this sheriff's department, you know, is dedicated to limiting its use of force and, in fact, has statistics to show that. And I appreciate all that you're doing and the sheriff, her leadership and your team. And you did rightfully point out that the Kent County Board of Commissioners has a responsibility for health, safety, and welfare, safety being one of the top three things we do. So the cost of that is certainly significant, and we're here as Board of Commissioners to support the Kent County Sheriff's Department.
We appreciate that support, Commissioner.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. Thank you for that presentation, and your share, it was really informative, and I'm glad for, you know, your very low use of force, too. I think it's, especially in these times, I wish that other law enforcement institutions could match this kind of, you know, low violence. But my question was really pertaining to, I know we have a lot of constituents here concerned about, you know, immigration and a lot of those laws, so I was just wondering, I noticed you didn't mention anything about any partnership with ICE during your presentation or how that's interacting with the county jail, so I was just wondering if there was any updates on that.
Yeah. I think I'm going to step up and take this. So we do not have any contracted relationships with ICE, whether it's in our correctional facility or our law enforcement agency. But ICE is a law enforcement agency that operates within the boundaries of Kent County and every other county in our nation, and there are times that criminal investigations will require an ICE connection, and we do work with ICE in that context. Pretty often, the co-jurisdictional teams will work with ICE if there's been an identified person who's person who's undocumented that is involved in some kind of criminal enterprise that we're investigating. And they will work side by side with them on that investigation. And in that context, they will be given information that is developed from the Kent County Sheriff's Department and many other departments in our county.
Thank you for that clarity. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got two questions. I think, under Sheriff Muir, you're probably well-teed to answer them both. But the first is, you know, you mentioned in your response to Commissioner Ponstein's question about the Marine Safety Division, some reductions in that state dollar amount that comes to us. And I was following some news articles recently about how federal dollars were being remitted from the states relative to what you all are currently using. Is that what you're talking about, in terms of the reduction, that there are grant dollars that, in theory, we've already signed agreements for, that were promised from the federal government that are now being rescinded, or is it a different thing?
So those would be dollars that are being promised to us for the next fiscal budget year. So the dollars that were promised to us this year, we did receive all those funds.
Okay. But this is a, you know, that's a shift, right? Because those dollars are part of a larger partnership, in theory, with the federal government.
Federal, local, state government, again, I mean, where the dollars are coming from, how they're allocated to this particular project, I won't be able to speak to.
Sure, yeah. You know, one of my favorite questions to ask whenever we're getting grant dollars in is, you know, is it pass-through dollars, are they promised dollars? Can you talk a little bit about maybe some of the other programs that we are seeing in the sheriff's department that are reliant on those federal dollars? You know, I know we get the James Byrne dollars that come in, that support our community. But, you know, I'm always interested in, are we using dollars that are potentially at risk, that we're either going to have to make up in general fund elsewhere, or have services that are going to be cut if those dollars don't come in?
So this topic, with federal dollars being frozen earlier this year, we did a inventory of every federal dollar that's coming into the sheriff's office for the law enforcement function, and the dollars are fewer and farther between. So we received some federal dollars for human trafficking task force, as well as the JAG grant that you're speaking of. But there really isn't going to be a substantial impact on law enforcement services from the sheriff's office if federal dollars are cut or eliminated.
Okay, that's useful. The other question I had is, you know, one of the most concerning images that we see in some of the media reports on immigration crackdowns across the U.S. is the use of masked, unsigned individuals to pick up people for, you know, ostensibly immigration violations, but, you know, potentially for other things. Can you talk a little bit about what the policies and practices are within the sheriff's department as it relates to the transparency? I know you all have body cams, right? That's a huge part of the transparency. In terms of name badges, in terms of covering up faces, can you talk a little bit about what the policies are within the department?
I can talk a little bit about our policies. I mean, we do have a small contingent that is, you know, an undercover drug operations team, and I don't want to give up any details or information that would prevent or jeopardize their safety or security. But all of our enforcement team is typically carrying police identification with them at any particular time. All of our uniformed staff, again, wears a body worn camera, a name tag, as well as having a badge present for them, which, again, will further identify them with the badge number that's on there. So we don't do any covert operations on a routine basis, but there is very many times our investigative division will be in plainclothes to conceal their identity for surveillance needs and/or for execution of search warrants. But it's not a typical tactic that's used, but it is a tactic all law enforcement agencies use to conceal their identity, to allow them to further their investigation.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Faber.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Halsted and I had the opportunity to tour the Behavioral Health Crisis Center this week. I was a little surprised that our sheriff's department isn't fully utilizing that facility, and I understand that to be a transportation issue primarily, as these road patrols are farther out, the time to bring an individual there and then get back on patrol. And typically, that individual would use an ambulance service to go to an emergency room that hasn't been an eligible reimbursable expense, therefore, to go to the Behavioral Health Center. So they're going to the emergency room. The whole ROI of that facility is to reduce emergency room visits and jail visits for individuals that don't need that. It sounds like that is changing, and just wanted to get your update on that, and making sure that all of our deputies know that that service is available, and that Kent County sheriff is leading the way to make sure that other jurisdictions also know that that Behavioral Health Crisis Center is there. The work that they're doing is astounding, and the results that they're getting are amazing. So hopefully, you can continue to advocate for EMS to bring people to that facility if that's the route that we're going.
Yep. Commissioner, you're very, very true to your words. The ambulance transportation has caused a little bit of a hurdle of bringing people to the stabilization unit, but it's something I just honestly spoke about with Captain Camminga just the other day, to make sure that our staff is aware, when it's appropriate, that we're using those services. And I do think as we start to, you know, combine and collaborate more with Network 180, with our embedded dispatcher, that you're going to see these services continue to be used when appropriate.
Thank you. I know Commissioner Womack had raised his hand. We have a, typically, the rule is commissioners can speak up to twice on a question. This isn't a question. I think I'm just in the interest of us keeping the meeting moving along. We have a lot of business today. I'm going to keep it to one today. But I know our sheriff's department is very accessible. So please feel free to follow up. Does anybody else have a first for a comment? Okay, I don't see any. I'd like to thank the sheriff's department for being here. Appreciate the work that you do. Thank you, under Sheriff Muir, for staying in the hot seat for us. Thank you to the leadership team, and we'll look forward to catching up with you guys again soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to agenda item number six, which is public comment related only to agenda action items. We did have comment cards this morning. The clerk has those, and we'll ask the clerk to please give the card for first public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have only one card at this time for this public comment. Sharon Smith.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Sharon Smith. This is my first time ever coming to a meeting and speaking like this, so I'm a little nervous. I appreciated the invocation earlier that was about caring for all in our community, meeting the gaps where the higher law enforcement is perhaps unjust, and the values that our city has for the beauty and diversity here. My husband is a CRC pastor. We have lived in the city of Grand Rapids for 30 years. We live in a Hispanic community, where my neighbors are feeling the direct impact of the current ICE policies that are changing daily and not following due process. The sheriff spoke about...
Pardon me, Ms. Smith. Can you pause that, please? Which agenda action item are you speaking to?
Oh, the report that just came.
That's technically not an action item. If you have a general comment, we can do that at the end on public comment related general county matters. Or you can speak, I can let you continue now, and then we can skip at the end, which is fine. Since you have the floor, okay. Please continue.
This is in response to the report that was just made. I was arrested two days ago, my first time with interaction with the law enforcement. I was doing nonviolent civil disobedience that was equal to a parking ticket. I was, one of the charges was for resisting arrest, for trying to drop my keys so somebody could take my car. My car was impounded, et cetera. It's my understanding that when a person is arrested, the form is asked if they are a citizen or noncitizen. Many of my friends and neighbors have reasons for not being noncitizens. They could be in the process of becoming a citizen, which I'm sure you're all aware takes years. They could have a green card and not be a citizen. They are residents. As he said, they are here to protect the residents of our county. So we know the Constitution protects the rights of residents, whether or not they are citizens. I pulled up upon about 10 unidentified men this week detaining Hispanic men. We know that Hispanic people are being targeted. It's been admitted that it was racial profiling. And this is just an evil racist system. I asked them who they were, what they were doing. They did not identify themselves. Their cars were unmarked. Some were masked. It is what we're seeing happening around the country. It is terrifying. We don't know if they're bounty hunters. We don't know if they're kidnapping them or what. We attempted to follow them, to see where they were taking him, and we were blocked. So we went to the ICE office, assuming that's where they were bringing them. I parked my car in a way that would prevent them from leaving, or so that we could follow any other cars that might leave, in unmarked vehicles. I was called, or the police were called, and then I went to the Kent County jail, where they now have my license plate in their system. My daughter, who's biracial, was driving to work the next day and saw a car behind her, a GRPD car. She was concerned that she was being followed because of my arrest.
Thank you. Is that the last of the cards for the public comment?
It is, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody else that wishes to give public comment on agenda action items only? Okay, I see none. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is the consent agenda. I will call on Commissioner, I'm sorry, Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move item seven, the consent agenda.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. Questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
I believe we have an error on the closed session minutes. I believe Commissioner Coleman voted no on that.
Thank you. Just one moment. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's to go, the motion on the...
It's to return to...
Correct.
Public, or the, and the closed session.
Yes.
Yeah, the vote was, the vote took place in the board meeting. Yes, thank you. Okay, no problem. Thank you, Commissioner, for the due diligence on that.
That vote, that nay vote is recorded in the public.
Great. Thank you, which we're also adopting with this motion. So anybody else, questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, on the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item eight, which is resolutions. And for eight A, I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of resolution 48 of today's date, which is presented to us from the Department of Public Works relative to the approval of expenditures on the disposal system bonds.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion on this question? Commissioner Faber.
So Kent County has the somewhat dubious distinction of having more registered contaminated PFOS sites than any other county in the state of Michigan. We represent about 10% of those sites, either identified as areas of interest or actual sites. So, you know, I believe in a good Christ unity. This is our Christ unity, our opportunity to do more with this crisis and really come out as a leader in how we're going to address PFOS contamination. Chair Green, you were at the epicenter of this, I believe, when you were on the board of the Plainfield Township. People might not know, when we found PFOS up in the Rockford area, there were only two labs in the entire United States that actually tested PFOS for blood, or blood for PFOS. Now, there are thousands, but that tells you how much we are on the front edge of this issue. And it's, again, our opportunity to do things like this project, where we're not only taking care of some of our legacy of landfills, but hopefully, offering a solution to our community for PFOS contamination. And so my question for the department director is, with this technology, I know at one point we were looking at providing some sort of mobile destruction unit, or having that as an option, whether that has potential to be available for other parts of our community, where we know that this, whether it's private or public, have this problem, that we're looking to be a solution, not only for our landfill sites, but beyond.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for the question, Commissioner Faber. At this time, we're going into design of the capture of the PFOS at the facilities that are either operated by or managed as closed facilities for Kent County. There was an option in the proposal to provide destruction, and the way we're looking at it right now is that we would lease that equipment and be able to use it after we've collected the PFOS, and then move to destroy the PFOS. So that certainly is still in play. And if we could broaden how we approach that to a more community-wide solution, we're open to having that conversation.
Yeah, that would be my encouragement. This, you know, they call it a forever chemical for a reason, and we really, I think, are going to benefit from having some of that technology locally beyond, again, just our closed landfill sites. Thank you.
Any others? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I wanted to point out, this is why it is fantastic that we have a Department of Public Works that is keeping an eye out for these kinds of things. Maintaining the health and safety of our community as it relates to PFOS is a huge task. We are able to do it in a contained way and for a very efficient amount of money by having our Department of Public Work, which is already co-located at these pollution sites, be the one that's actually doing that. So I appreciate that we have such a great, robust system, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Dara, just a follow-up question. My understanding is this resolution will essentially, if it's approved, will allow the department to recover the costs incurred in processing forward the finalization of what it's going to take to do this and submit it.
Yeah, that's correct. We expect that the expenditure will be somewhere between 12 to 15 million total that would require bonding. First step is we have to develop a 75% design so that we can have the contractor provide us what would be called the guaranteed maximum price. So with that million, too, we'll design the system. It'll be located at South Kent Landfill, Kentwood Landfill, and the North Kent Landfill to treat either groundwater, contact water, which is anything that comes in contact with trash, or the leachate itself, which is the stormwater that comes in contact with trash. Once that design is finalized, then we're going to go back to our Board of Public Works, request they review and approve the system that would be then purchased and installed. That would then have to come back to this board for approval to finance that portion of it. This resolution allows us to go back and refund, if you will, or recover the costs that we're incurring during the design phase prior to bonds being issued.
So these costs can be included in the bond amounts, and then ultimately, the bond is covered by the cost of operations.
That is correct.
So I noticed the information suggests that the bond will come back to us in September, kind of in July. Seems like that's pretty quick. Are we going to have all of that done by September?
No, sir. We thought that we would be a little further along in the process. The company that will be doing the design will be starting that, I would think, within the next week or two, but that's going to be a couple a month process. I would think our Board of Public Works and the Board of Commissioners will see this later in the fall, early winter, so that we can then, if approved, be able to bond and then start construction in 2026.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. Just a brief question. So we've settled and got PFOS dollars, one from a direct lawsuit against Wolverine. Is all the PFOS money that we've accrued, is that already spent? Is that why we have to bond now?
It's not all spent. It's not all been received either. The cost of installing these treatment systems goes beyond just the North Kent Landfill, which was impacted by Wolverine, as you mentioned. The Kentwood Landfill, which is a closed legacy facility that closed in the 70s, our existing operating South Kent Landfill also needs treatment, and we installed PFOS pre-treatment at the Waste Energy Facility several years ago. The purpose for installing these systems is to meet the permit requirements of the City of Grand Rapids, City of Wyoming, the North Kent Transfer State, or no, North Kent Sewer Authority, and to meet Eagle requirements for discharge of groundwater to surface water. So, we're, we're actually meeting the requirements of four different permits at four, at four different locations. You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, this is, Commissioner Hennessy.
You're in enterprise activity, and you pay your own way for the cost. Do you think, do you anticipate that taking on this additional bonding responsibility will lead to an increase in our charges?
That would be yes. Our estimate, based on what we think we're going to need to borrow, was an added annual cost for both debt service and operations, somewhere between $800,000 and $900,000 a year to treat out the PFOS. Because we rely on the rate structure of the fees that we charge at all of our facilities, we will have to make that adjustment to cover that new cost, yes. It's built into, and our 2026 budget already covers or includes that, but future budgets will also have to include that. You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I do not see anyone. We will, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution forty-eight, Commissioner Boujack...
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell...
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer...
Yes.
Faber...
Yes.
Halsted...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Hildenbrand...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Legrand...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Merchant...
Yes.
Morales...
Yes.
Morse...
Yes.
Oliver King...
Yes.
Pakla...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Steck...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Chair Green...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays, one abstain. The motion passes, resolution forty-niner is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move to eight C, and I will call on Commissioner Halsted.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt resolution fifty on the Nash Creek Enter County Drain at Large Appropriation.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hildenbrand. Questions, comments, discussion? Yes, Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Chair. I have a conflict of interest in this matter concerning the Nash Creek Drain, as I live within the Drain District, and this decision would personally impact me personally, so I have to abstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Morse shared that with me and council prior to the meeting. Any others? Okay, I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution forty-nine, Commissioner Boujack...
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell...
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer...
Yes.
Faber...
Yes.
Halsted...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Hildenbrand...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Legrand...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Merchant...
Yes.
Morales...
Yes.
Morse...
Yes.
Oliver King...
Yes.
Pakla...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Steck...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Chair Green...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays, one abstain. The motion passes, resolution forty-niner is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move to eight C, and I will call on Commissioner Halsted.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt resolution fifty on the Nash Creek Enter County Drain at Large Appropriation.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions, comments, or discussion? Commissioner Faber.
I don't know if there's anyone from the Drain Commission here. Maybe one. I would just like to encourage the Office of the Drain Commissioner to really integrate with the county website in a more holistic way. Right now, none of the public meetings are integrated with the calendar. I know it's being improved, the webpage for the Drain Commission, but it really is a laundry list of projects. Some of these projects, we saw this from Dean Lake as well, I mean, these stretch over years. I think it's difficult for residents to know where in the process they may be, and then, right now, the perception is that we're burying some of the information that may be vital to people that are impacted by these decisions. So, maybe not a question, but a comment of, or I'll put it this way, keep up the great work of integrating with the webpage. I look forward to seeing all of these meetings on the full calendar for the county.
Joel, I trust you'll share that with the Drain Commissioner. I don't know that we need to have a discussion on it right now.
Yeah, yeah, communication is always a work in progress, and we do good, we can do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I see none. This is, again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution fifty, Commissioner Boujack...
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrell...
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer...
Yes.
Faber...
Yes.
Halsted...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Hildenbrand...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Legrand...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
Merchant...
Yes.
Morales...
Yes.
Morse...
Yes.
Oliver King...
Yes.
Pakla...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Steck...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Chair Green...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays, one abstain. The motion passes, resolution fifty is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item eight D. I will call on Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose resolution fifty-one of today's date, the approval of Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan fiscal year 2026 proposed annual implementation plan.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Ooh. Commissioner Oliver King. Questions, comments, or discussion? Had a good presentation on this in committee. I think you guys may have seen it, so we appreciate the work. All right, with that, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. I know we also have the cards here, there will be an opportunity at the end. Outside of that, you have up to three minutes to speak. Please give your name and address for the record. Madam Clerk, could you please begin the calling of the cards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have Deborah Perkins, and on deck, we have Daniel Allen Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is likewise my first meeting to ever do anything like that, so my name is Deborah Perkins, and I live at 1615 Acacia Drive Northwest, so I believe Carol Hennessy is my Commissioner. And I am here because I just want to give a little autobiography and what I'm concerned about. I have raised nine children, we've lived here for 43 years, and I have 23 grandchildren, and the majority of all those do reside and love residing in our Grand Rapids area. So, I also have worked for the last over dozen years at the Grand Rapids Community College as a professional tutor there, primarily in the math department. And before that, I was chaplain at the county jail for women, and because of that, I feel like my background gives me something to speak on here. I am very concerned. One of the beautiful things about Grand Rapids is that we are so culturally diverse, and I've always been amazed how welcoming we have been as a community. We have a huge refugee population, a huge immigration population, and all that cultural diversity is what is making Grand Rapids so attractive. But unfortunately, what I see happening at GRCC, and I would say in our community, is a pause, a pause that is a fear. And you see the halls in GRCC, and it used to be very alive with interaction of diverse nature, many languages, many accents, and that is quiet. We have been quieted the last semester and for the last several months. I'm concerned about what's going to happen this fall. So, I just encourage you, I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate that you're here. I just encourage you to continue to strive, to keep making Grand Rapids and our area so culturally diverse and such a welcoming area. We are known nationwide, I know this from working with the criminal justice system. We are known nationwide for our services and our programs that are offered here, and I'm so thankful for that. We're doing a wonderful job. Grand Rapids was recently voted in the top 25 across the nation of cities in how we run our government. Thank you, because you're part of that. So, I just encourage you, please keep up the work, and please take away that pause of fear. Do what you can to make this that welcoming city that we know we can be. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next up, we have Daniel Allen Scott, and on deck, Charlie Snidderger.
Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Chairman Green. Greetings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Daniel Allen Scott, but my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Longtime resident of the county, and you've already given me permission, I don't have to share my address because my family and I have many enemies. Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, for that invocation. Where are you? Yes. Appreciated that. By the way, your first name means, who is like the Lord. I'm just here to, again, advocate for the most disenfranchised, abused members of our society. The unborn. The unborn.
Pardon me, can we please keep the comments when people are speaking to a minimum? Thank you.
I'm so grateful that we're seeing answers to prayer from all around the country. First of all, funding is being cut to these murder factories, including the one on 425 East Cherry. In fact, I hear from inside sources, it's close to shutting down because it's also losing private donors. And our city and our county would be so much blessed if that place was shut down once and for all. They call themselves Planned Parenthood. We call it Planned Genocide. Already, places in Jackson, Marquette, Petoskey are closed, and latest news I have, there are no murder factories at all in the Upper Peninsula. So, I'm here, as I've been many times, to speak up for them. And because of all this money being cut, in fact, $133 billion each year since Roe versus Wade was overturned, can you imagine the babies that are being saved? In fact, our local ministry, led by Jordan Sweezer, has reported that 118 babies have been saved. He was advocating at 320 East Fulton, which is now closed, and of course, at 425 East Cherry. And 425, we must close that place. They are now selling sexual transition drugs to 16-year-old girls without parental consent, without a doctor, over the phone, mutilating these precious young people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Charlie Snidderger, and after that, we have Alize Juánez.
Morning, Charlie.
Good morning. Good morning, Kent County Board of Commissioners. My name's Charlie Snidderger, I live in Ada, Michigan. I've been a resident of Kent County since I was born, 70 years, and I've liked, I just want to commend you all for the job that you've been doing in making this a welcoming community. I take exception to what the Sheriff's Department said, that the reason for the reduction in crime is because of their force. It's because of you people. You've made this a welcoming community, you supply, I volunteered with the Kent County Community Action Program, I fed hungry people, I've been involved with Network 180, which is helping those people that have mental issues. It's like we're doing something good. I woke up this morning, my wife says to me, what are you going to do today, Charlie? I said, I'm going to go down to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting, and I'm going to say to them, you're good people, so why the heck are you turning a blind eye to what ICE is doing in this community? I've seen the terror. These are terrorist people. They are masked, they are carrying automatic weapons, they are abducting people off the street, they're throwing them into cars without warrant, without informing them of their rights. The Sheriff's Department said they're a lawful agency. I don't know about that. They sure do not act like they're lawful. What I'm here today to ask you folks is, consider the possibility of making Kent County a sanctuary county. It's not unheard of. There are currently, Muskegon has done it, Leland County has done it, Washtenaw County has done it, three other counties in Michigan. They had the fortitude, the integrity to stand up and say, we will not cooperate with ICE. We will not cooperate with ICE. It's not like sanctuary is some kind of magic shield we're going to put around this county. I mean, there's still going to be arrests, and there's still going to be ICE, but the main thing is, we will not be a part of it. We will not cooperate. That's all I'm asking from you people. Do not cooperate. Do not give funds, do not give resources. Don't cooperate. It's that simple. You know, my wife says, Charlie, what are you going to do today? I'm going to do what I every do, what I do every day. I'm going to try and make the world a little bit better. She likes to say to me, are you going to go out and save the world today? And I'm like, no, 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 I can't do that, but I can make the world a little bit better. I can stand up, and I can use my voice to point out injustice, I can point out wrongdoing, and it's so great. We sat here, we stood up together, and we looked at that flag, and we said, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
For all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Charlie.
Next up, we have Alize Juánez, and on deck, we have Margaret Holly Lowry.
Thank you. Before you begin, I just want to remind the public that we do have a standing rule that prevents noise-making behaviors, so we'd like to make sure that we keep the quorum and allow people to speak and allow the board to hear. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Alize Alonso Juánez. Thank you for trying. And I'm not going to share my address, but I hope that if I didn't have an address, my voice would still matter here today. I'm here to demand Kent County Commission adopt sanctuary policies, prohibit Kent County cooperation with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and withdraw support from private entities that profit from ICE contracts, such as Avilo Airlines, which entered into a $150 million contract with ICE to deport immigrants directly to El Salvador. I implore directly to Dan Burrell and Jennifer Merchant, who sit on the Kent County Airport Board Authority. ICE deportations are violent, incite terror, and are happening here in Kent County. Do the Kent County Commissioners stand behind the people of Kent County or the self-admitted,
But I have lived in Kent County, I've worked in Kent County, and I currently am a student at Grand Valley and their Grand Rapids campus. Yesterday, Grand Valley had a picnic for study abroad alumni, and it was a great chance for me to reminisce on my experience in Mexico and to see the richness of many, many different countries that are, in fact, here in Kent County right now. For my study abroad, I went to Pueblo, Mexico. I arrived speaking Spanish fairly well. There were lots of supports, as I was at a partner university of Grand Valley while I was there. And even with those supports and with that language fluency, it was still a challenge, and that was my choice to be there. Generally, the people who arrive here to the U.S. without the proper documentation are coming from challenges, from very rough situations. They aren't looking to expand their horizons or have a unique experience like I was when I went. Frequently, they're fleeing from war or violence, or they're just trying to make enough money to feed their children, let alone provide adequate housing or any health care. When I was in Mexico in 2019, the daily minimum wage was $5.00. It's now about $15.00 per day. And the groceries cost about the same. In Venezuela, the monthly legal minimum wage is $3.00, less than a dollar a week. I remember sometime in a social studies class, learning how much of the world, around 15%, lives on less than a dollar a day. And knowing that, I can't say I blame people for looking for whatever they can to make their life better. So when people from those situations arrive to Kent County, to Grand Rapids, they deserve first and foremost to be treated like people in any context. Undocumented immigration is a civil offense, not a criminal offense. It's the same type of offense as a parking ticket. If I got a speeding ticket, I would not expect to go to jail. But when ICE detains these people, they are often revoked the due process of law, which is something the Fourth Amendment is supposed to protect, not just for citizens, but for all people. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. So I am here to ask you to declare this county as a sanctuary county, to prevent the county and jails from working with ICE. I acknowledge, I talked about civil versus criminal earlier, but undocumented immigration is a civil offense, not a criminal offense. Not to flock cameras with ICE, and also to work with the County Airport Authority to end their contract with Avilo. Thank you for your desire to make Kent County a great place. Please consider these steps to make it a safe place for everyone, too.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lauren Coman, and on deck, Kristin Green.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all for the work that you're doing here today. My name is Lauren. I've been a Kent County resident for 32, 33 years. I'm a mother of three beautiful daughters and a proud community activist and organizer to support our most, most impacted, um, people. I've listened this morning to a lot of people talk about how Kent County is a great place to live. We're making improvements. We're making a amazing place to be. And I just want to kind of throw out the overarching question is, for who? Who are we making it a great place to be? Because right now, the comments about how great everything is have come from mostly white-bodied, privileged individuals. People with the utmost privilege, and those are not the people that are under attack right now at all. I also listened to you open this meeting with a Christian prayer. I have several issues about that. One being the separation of government and county entities and, and prayer, that's, that's a huge issue. But two, if we're gonna open with Christian behavior, I suppose we should think about how Christians behave. And that is not doing what we are doing to undocumented immigrants. Shame on Kent County for encouraging this kind of behavior and allowing it. I actually came here today to speak on behalf of our immigrant population, the various behaviors of Kent County, and was able to sit through the slideshow that happened earlier today. And although I have plenty of comments on that, I have some real concerns here about that Real-Time Information Center. You just listen to them say that they will share that information with other entities of law enforcement. Other entities of law enforcement identify themselves. Other entities of law enforcement don't wear masks. They don't ride in unmarked vehicles and kidnap people off the side of the road. So as a citizen of Kent County, how am I supposed to know that that person being kidnapped is by an actual law enforcement entity? Because as you listened to someone state earlier, when we've asked them who they are, they refuse to answer. We're blocked. We're detained. That is not how we treat residents in Kent County whatsoever. It's also concerning to me to listen to Kent County sheriffs explaining that they want to climb into every nook and cranny of our business through that information center, which were their words. That way they can get involved and really get detailed, right? But when a female inmate at the Kent County Jail, Maya Carlton, was in their care, they failed miserably to maintain any standard of care for her, and Maya no longer has life on this earth. Justice for Maya. There is no oversight, there's no community control, and as Commissioner King mentioned, there's no trust currently. And I feel comfortable saying pretty openly that that presentation did not develop any more trust whatsoever. We are demanding that Kent County officials declare this county a sanctuary to all undocumented immigrants. Protect every single one of your residents, no matter how they got here. Commit to preventing the Kent County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Services, and Jail from cooperating with Immigration and Customs Enforcement officials. You know that if someone is picked up on a traffic ticket and they end up in the Kent County Jail, they will call ICE. They just told you that. So that is not protecting our residents. The Kent County Sheriff's Office will not share flock camera images with ICE.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kristin Green. On deck, we have Jose Rodriguez.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kristin Green. I live in Howard City. I work, uh, here in Grand Rapids with 49507, 49508, 49504, and other various, um, zip codes in Kent County and Grand Rapids. I'm a community health worker, serving Kent County residents. I work directly with immigrant families whose health, safety, and stability are being threatened by the ongoing cooperation between Kent County and ICE, including families who have been directly impacted by the violence of deportation. Over the past six months, we've seen multiple instances where Kent County Sheriff's Department was involved during ICE arrests. One recent case involved, hmm, a mother who was held, who was jailed for a traffic warrant and held by Kent County for ICE after her bond was paid. Her husband watched ICE take her from Kent County Jail, chain her, and transfer her to a detention center. ICE even told her that she wasn't on their radar until the jail reported her. This arrest was not one from a criminal enterprise, as the sheriff had stated their involvement with ICE has been earlier this morning. This is a family separation. This is state violence, and it's happening right here in our community. We are calling on this commission to adopt clear sanctuary policies. One, to prohibit, to prohibit ICE detention centers from ever being built in Kent County. Two, end all ICE holds at the Kent County Jail. And three, stop using flock cameras and other surveillance tools that aid ICE in targeting our neighbors. If you truly care about the health and wealth, well-being of immigrant families in Kent County, it's time to take action and stop your cooperation with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have three more cards. Up now is Jose Rodriguez. On deck is Kyle Thornton.
Morning. Hello. Uh, my name is Jose Rodriguez. Um, I, I am a community activist. Um, I'm also a school board member for Grand Rapids Public Schools. Um, I'm also the son of immigrants, so first generation. And I'm here today to speak for our immigrant community, documented and undocumented. Admittedly, I've never been to a Kent County meeting before. This is my first time. Folks with the nine-to-five, it's hard to get here, right? So, so. But I'm simply here to ask you one question, and that is, do you care for all residents of Kent County? You may think, of course, why else would I be here in this, in this position, and I want to believe it. However, for some of you, your beliefs do not match your behaviors. I'm here in solidarity with Movimiento Cosecha to ask that Kent County adopt a sanctuary policy that explicitly states our support for immigrant communities and rejects any efforts to work with ICE to detain any of our community members through county means. Now, some of you may say that such policies are not legally binding, and you're correct. However, adopting such policies is just step one. As many cities have done across our nation, they have gone further in their policies in ensuring that local police do not share any information with ICE, that no resources go towards these efforts. Some of you may believe that the current systems, the current policies, and the current policies that we have are enough, and as we dive deeper into authoritarianism, I'll say that we need more protections. Maybe you've read that ICE has, maybe you've read that ICE has gotten access to medical records to try and identify undocumented individuals. You've seen Trump push to remove policies that prohibit ICE agents from entering sensitive locations, such as schools, hospitals, and places of worship. But you may already know all of this. I hope that you stay informed on all of these issues. So again, I ask that if you care for all residents of Kent County, don't just talk about it, be about it. Show that you care for all residents of Kent County and work to pass a sanctuary policy and work to protect one of our most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kyle Thornton, and on deck, John Williamson.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Kyle Thornton. I'm in the 19, or 15, 95, whatever. I live in Grand Rapids. As an educator, I have seen reduced participation from immigrant populations, i.e. I've seen much higher rates of absenteeism, due in part to terror inflicted by the ICE, uh, from this administration. I believe we should separate ourselves from the federal ICE admin, operations. I know GRPD and Kent, um, police have made statements to the effect that they do not aid ICE operations. But in the last two weeks, we have seen GRPD arrest protesters who have been tracking ICE activity in the city. According to the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution, we are not required to enforce federal immigration laws with local law enforcement. We have seen how large and small-scale ICE operations are causing instability in other cities. ICE officers are not identifying themselves and being overly hostile with the backing of local police. And with the backing of local police, this erodes trust in local law enforcement. Additionally, about 11% of the city population are immigrants, meaning about 1/10 of the city will be heavily affected by ICE operations, disrupting many of our local businesses and industries. I would be pleased if we made the move to a sanctuary city, but I could settle for a pledge that the local law enforcement will simply not, um, aid materially, assist or support our operations of, in Grand Rapids in any material way. Also, I request that the airport end its relationship with Avilo Airlines due to the human trafficking on behalf of the Trump administration. Thank you for your time today. I hope you consider my position so the city remains peaceful for all of its residents. Thank you.
Our last card is John Williamson.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is John. I am a local community organizer and nonviolence advocate. Free Palestine. You may have heard, "Love your neighbor," but I tell you, "Love your enemy." Love is the only force powerful enough to turn an enemy into a friend. Hate cannot cast out hate. Only love can do that. Darkness cannot cast out darkness. Only light can do that. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. Make Grand Rapids a sanctuary, excuse, make Kent County a sanctuary county. When you see something is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something. You have to do something. The Kent County Sheriff's Department murdered an unarmed 17-year-old named Riley Doggett. His only crime was being scared at 17 and running. Riley's body was mutilated under the wheel of a cop car. Instead of getting paramedics as policy and safety demand, the Kent County Sheriff's Deputy Josiah McMaines raced to handcuff the child while blood poured out of his head. Abolish the police. Abolish ICE. If you can't tell Donald Trump is treating immigrants the way Hitler treated immigrants, you don't know right from wrong. ICE may be operating within the borders of Kent County, but they do not operate within the borders of the law. ICE kidnaps people without due process. Without due process, there's no way to prevent ICE from kidnapping anybody brown and shipping them to, quote, "the worst prison in the world." Because they don't identify themselves or use due process, a group of racist white guys can cover their face and kidnap brown people and not be stopped in this county. ICE is the KKK. ICE is the Gestapo. Immigrants are sent by ICE to concentration camps, period. If you can't tell that Israel is treating Palestine the way Nazis treated the Jews, you don't know right from wrong. Bring back the Dutch tradition of hiding families in your attic. Anne Frank was not a Dutch citizen. Anne Frank was not a Dutch citizen. Whoever saves one life saves the world entire. We must take care of each other whether the government approves or not, and we must speak out whether the government approves or not. We cannot overcome our oppressors with violence. We will have to raise our voices together. Peaceful protest is mightier than the mightiest weapon of violence devised by man. We have to believe we can change their minds with our words and change their hearts with our demonstrations of love. Make this a sanctuary county, and when Trump comes for Kent County, we will stand against him. Black Lives Matter, justice for Patrick Leoya, justice for Samuel Sterling, justice for Hank Weimer, justice for Riley Doggett, justice for Maya Carlton. Make Kent County a sanctuary county. It's what our most vulnerable neighbors are asking for. The time is always right to do the right thing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to give public comment this morning? Please come forward. Please give your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Joanna Kanuski, and I am, my address is 646 Marietta, Grand Rapids, 49505. Um, I wanted to add a quick, um, comment about the sanctuary county policies, which is that a lot of times, I think, people imagine sanctuary policies as, they talk about being sanctuary cities and/or counties in a kind of scary way, like, oh, we're gonna, like, harbor violent criminals and nobody, because they're immigrants, nobody can, uh, you know, arrest them or whatever. That's not how this works. Our law enforcement, if anybody is committing violent crimes, if people are committing actual crimes, we have that authority. We can handle it as a county. We do not need ICE to come in and take care of us. We take care of ourselves. We do not need to be putting our resources into doing their work and them taking our valuable residents who are not committing crimes, who are contributing to the community. That is what we're asking for. We're not asking to protect people who are doing violent harm. Nobody's asking for that. We're asking to protect our valuable community members and for us to enforce our own laws, not use our resources that are meant for that and meant for taking care of us to supporting a organization that is working outside the law. Wherever, however you feel about immigration, it isn't that hard to find the evidence that they're ignoring due process, that they're not following what should be in place constitutionally. Just don't work with them. Don't help them. We can take care of our communities. We can be safe with our own resources. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners. My name is Michael Thompson. Uh, I've lived over 30 years in the Grand Rapids area. Uh, I don't need to say much. Much has been said that I agree with wholeheartedly. Sanctuary is something that this government, I mean, the, the federal government has gone after almost from day one, even refusing to respect sanctuary of sacred places, churches, synagogues, other places where people in desperate, uh, fear for their safety could go. This government has said no to that. This is a, this is a centuries upon centuries tradition. I think it is only appropriate, in a setting like this, where we have criminalized being a refugee and criminalized being a migrant, to stand in our common core values, whether you are Jewish, Christian, Muslim, or of no faith, or of just good faith, to say that we will not authorize the erasure of due process and the criminalization of just being here, with papers, without papers. People are not illegal. They may be here without the paperwork checked, and their, their Ts are not crossed, and their Is are not dotted. That does not mean they belong in the, in a Gestapo camp, or in a Gator Alcatraz, or in God knows where. Let's stand together. You, I think, are good people, serving the public. The public has spoken. I'm one of, a half dozen, and I'm sure a dozen more would follow me. Put an end to this cooperation with ICE. It's step one in retaking our neighborhoods and loving our neighbors justly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I see no one else. We will move on to the Administrator's Report.
Uh, yes, just a couple items today. I did want to mention, in, uh, response to Commissioner Paklós' question, the Marine Patrol money flows through the Coast Guard to the state to us, and they did a kind of a, what they called more of a temporary freeze as they evaluate, uh, that program. And we were able to make that up within the general fund, because it is a very critically important program. Also, I just wanted to say, uh, we have the Kent County Community, North Community FESC coming up. This is, uh, just the first in an expanded engagement effort, uh, which the board has identified as a priority in our strategic planning sessions, but it should be a very fun day. Meyer has partnered with us to provide free backpacks for K-12 students. As school is looming, there will be food trucks and ice cream, uh, face painting, all kinds of kids' activities. The Sheriff's Office and K-9 Unit will be there. Uh, a lot of meet and greet tables, uh, I think at least 15, just to help inform people about who Kent County is and what services we provide. Also, photo booth, fire trucks, and, and a lot of things. So I, I hope everybody can make it. If this goes well, I think you'll see us replicate this, uh, in the east and south parts of the county, and so I hope you can all turn out. The last thing, I, I feel, after so many years doing this work, I, I think it's important, once in a while, just to speak to process. Because in Michigan, county government, city government, township government, village government, we are creatures of the state, and, uh, how we operate is determined by the Michigan Constitution and statutes. And so, we have been asked by different political movements to become sanctuary county. by different political movements to become sanctuary county, to become a Second Amendment county, to become a constitutional county. Our Board has a longstanding policy of not taking up items that are outside of the authority of the county under Michigan law. And so, that would be a nonbinding resolution for things like abortion, like immigration, for things that simply fall outside of the county jurisdiction. And so, I understand that in these times, people are frustrated, people want to voice, but I just wanted to temper the voice with the expectation of what the legal authority of the Board is and what likely won't happen in the future.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Number 11, which is reports. Are there any Commissioners who need to give reports this morning? Okay, I see none. Move on to Agenda Item Number 12, which is miscellaneous. Is there anyone for miscellaneous this morning? Yes, Commissioner Hildebrand.
I bet you know what I'm going to speak on.
I sure do.
Thank you, Chair Green. I just want to remind everybody that next week is our County Youth Fair, our Kent County Youth Fair, in the new fairgrounds in Lowell Township. I distributed an agenda to the Commissioners with all the activities going on next week. I look forward to being there, along with, I know Commissioner Morris has children showing animals, as well as our county clerk, Lisa Posthumous Lyons, will have family showing their animals. So I encourage you to take a look at the agenda, come out and see the wonderful grounds, beautiful 140 acres that is being developed, impacting so many of our families and children here in the county. So if you have any questions, I know the clerk has been a longtime family member of the fair, and so feel free to ask Commissioner Morris or myself or the clerk if you have any questions, but hope to see you out there. Be a lot of good times. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, some good news from the zoo over this past couple weeks. I just want to point out, a lot of times, the rich and the affluent kind of get singled out of not paying their fair share. I just want to thank Bill and Bo Adamup, who donated $15 million to ensure the completion of the giraffe exhibit, which should come online in 2028. They are also the same individuals that stepped forward to ensure that that new honor exhibit, which should be completed at the end of the year and open next year. It's just remarkable, and there's different things in the county where people have stepped forward and donated to make this community better. Now, you know, I do want to just say one thing that's getting tiresome from my point when we talk about, you know, immigration. What we've had at the border for the past four years is an immigration. It was a wide-open border, no checks, no balances. We've always been a welcoming country. When I was in high school, I remember the Vietnamese refugees were more than welcome, and we welcomed them from all over the place. But at the end of the day, when we talk about these people that are so-called arrested, they aren't living their life, liberty, in pursuit of happiness, there are sectors in there that people just don't want to talk about. What about the group of young ladies that have been captured by sex traffickers that came across the border illegally, through different means, for one thing, to target young kids? And for some of those young ladies that are handcuffed to a bed, repeatedly raped, hour on end, day after day, where are their rights? They were in this country, same thing, but we never talk about that. What about the parents in this county that have lost children to the fentanyl overdose? The number-one sector to get those drugs real cost was that wide-open border, coming in from China, through Mexico, through the drug cartels that are in this community right now. So I will always back, whether it's the DOJ, FBI, ICE, local law enforcement, state law enforcement, or any federal law enforcement. Those children that are affected the most, that no one wants to talk about, are still out there, they're still suffering, and we want to stop any type of investigation to try to locate those kids as a bad thing for America. So I just had to say that, but those are two things that people seem to always forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please, guys, we don't have any, we have a rule against noise-making. We've tried to enforce it for people on any different side of any different issue, so thank you. And I'd like to ask Commissioners to try to keep decorum to that's not directed at you, Commissioner Ponstein. Thank you. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. Ponstein, I think you speak to a lot of things that, like you said, a lot of people don't necessarily want to look in the eye, but I'd like to remind people that, like, crime doesn't have a race, right? Crime can be committed by anybody, resident or not, citizen or not. Anyway, with that said, I just want to remind you all, well, first I want to thank everybody for maintaining an open heart and open mind for the public comment that was shared with us today. There was a lot of stories that were definitely heart-wrenching. There's no shortage of cruelty and evil in the world right now, and I think what we can do is just do the best that we can within our bounds and within our scope, and just try to be compassionate, lead with kindness. I'd just like to remind you all as well that legality is not a black or white issue. It is a spectrum. As one of the public commentators mentioned, it can take years sometimes for this stuff to get figured out, and it's nearly impossible to do it from outside. Like, somebody has to be here in that gray area, and right now, that's not safe. And as your only Hispanic Commissioner, I may have to start carrying my own birth certificate around too, so just be kind.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Walmart.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Morales for her words, her comments, and letting us know just how it affects one of our colleagues on the Board. And as she said, crime is not defined by race, is not defined by your immigration status, and one thing has happened with immigration. When people say immigrants, people automatically get a profile in their head because of what has come out of this administration, and we are seeing people being targeted that are from some of the southern countries, South America. We're seeing people being targeted who are people of color. We're seeing people being sent to prisons without due process, not only sending them out of the country, some not even returning to the country of origin. So the due process concerns, the family separation, I've been talking to some of the national activists that I talk to monthly, and we're looking into the force-feeding of hunger strikes within immigration. In immigration, I guess they're penitentiaries, I don't know what they call them, but how they're being treated while they're waiting to be deported without going in front of a judge. And it's just something that if the United States of America does not look at the due process rights, look at the treatment in these detention centers, then it's something that's going to have to go to the United Nations or Geneva Convention, because even prisoners of war have rights. And here in the United States of America, I just really would like to see us do better, and as Morales said, keep an open heart to really look at this situation. Also, as we've been looking into the force-feeding of these hunger strikes, the abuse that are even coming from within there because they don't have enough guards for oversight in these detentions. So, one thing, I do give credit to our Sheriff's Department, being one of the first that I knew in the state to not renew an ICE contract. I would just hope that we would look at, because of the things ICE is doing, that may end up, that seem to be unconstitutional to me, but may be even proven in a court of law to be unconstitutional one day, I would hope that we would at least look through our organizations to make sure that our organizations are not working with ICE, are not voluntarily cooperating and sending over information to ICE. Our Sheriff's Department took a step back. I don't think they did that as a diss to ICE, but they did it as the separation between county, state, and federal government. And I'm very glad that that decision was made when it was made, because as I said, I can bring video proof, I can bring testimonies that there is people's due process and constitutional rights being violated by ICE, and I do not want to see Kent County participate in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So, a couple of things that I think that I want to report on that is a matter that the county is pursuing within their jurisdiction. One is, you've heard about the 100 and 100 program, which is to address chronic homelessness in the immediately core area. It is a program that is not directly governmental. It is community-driven, but it is a great program that has had some really good success, based on a conference that we had earlier this week. We're well over 100. I think we're at 130 and still counting, so it is accomplishing what we had hoped that we would do. One of the key issues and characteristics of that is the Network 180 partnership in providing caseworkers to work with the individuals with whom we are trying to place in the longer-term sustained housing. And that is so successful, we need to add additional caseworkers, and we've been able to find some funding to do that. So, looking forward to being able to probably address all of the individuals in the immediate listing, and then look where else we can be successful. The second is, Commissioner Faber raised the ongoing concern about having EMS, emergency response costs, covered under Medicaid when they deliver to the CSU. It is an ongoing issue. I will, though, report, and I want to make sure people know, that 180 does have other funding that we are providing to cover that cost in the meantime. So, to our EMS providers, rest assured, you'll get paid if you deliver to the CSU.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. Thank you. Before I call on Commissioner McLeod for adjournment, I'd like to remind the Board members that we will be having a budget work session. I want to keep things moving, so we're going to begin that work session at 10:40 a.m. So, don't be late. We're going to start without you. With that, I will call on, oh, yes, please return your closed session minutes, back to your left, and we'll get them to the clerk. With that, I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, August 14, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Your support. Supported by Commissioner Hildebrand. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.